I move.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Dr. Shaw Ropel.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Navarro?
Here.
Shaw?
Yes.
Tease?
Here.
Lopez Camila?
Uh, here. All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Ms. Johnson, if you can lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, we'll start with our resolutions. What's wrong?
Are they damaged like in the corner?
I don't think so.
No.
I don't know.
That's not on your.
Well, you know, I just want to take a few minutes, you know, just as a board. And, you know, the item that I wrote was, you know, Monday, June twenty-fourth, you know, we lost a colleague and a fellow board member, Dr. Sandra Shimon Rogers. And that was to a long and prolonged illness. I think most of you know, Dr. Rogers was elected in April of two thousand and twenty-three. Served, you know, the entire year, but struggled from about September, October with an illness that gained severity in March, April, May. And I, and I thought it appropriate, you know, one, to take a moment of silence just to think about Sandra. I personally, I was heartbroken when I found out the news. I was stunned and just shocked. I was, I suppose being in regular communication with her husband and with her, it just always seemed to me, well, you know, of course, you know, you're in good care. You're at University of Chicago Hospital. Well, you know, doctors will certainly sort, sort this out. But regrettably, that's not the case. And I was, you know, really proud to, you know, Dr., Mr. Navarro, Mrs. Lopez Camila and I represented the board and the district at her funeral. So I thought we could take a moment of silence. And I just always think, you know, the last time we saw Sandra, we saw her at her funeral. And I just think it's so important to, to talk about actually how this person lived before we just moved on. So why don't we take just a moment of silence? Thanks. And anyone want to contribute anything? Just a memory, you know, something that you thought about, you know, when you thought of Sandra?
How many kids does she have?
Two, two. She has a stepson and a son. They're both LTHS students. Her and Chris both had previous marriages. They're married and they both have children from those previous marriages. That was hard to see, right? You know, at the funeral, it's hard to see two young men, right? Really, really impacted in that way. You know, one of the things I think we should acknowledge is, you know, I, I think just, you know, being an outstanding human being, one of the amazing things when she was sick, my daughter and my wife went to Austria and Germany. And many of you might know or might not know, but Sandra had Austrian citizenship in addition to her US citizenship. She was born in Salzburg. And while she was sick, I think, you know, she used to text me and say, I, I need things to do. Because I think many of you know, she was an energetic person. She sent us this incredible list of things to do in Austria and Germany. So my wife and my daughter used that, you know, with fidelity. I also think it's important to acknowledge just her, her, her contribution to her profession.
I am curious, what was one of the things you did?
Uh, I didn't, I didn't do.
Or she did.
Uh, but for example, they went on the Sound of Music Tour, right? Which you would think, this is terrible touristy Salzburg, but came highly recommended and they did it. And it was wonderful, right? But I also think, you know, Sandra, just if you think about her profession, you know, she was a medical doctor, doctor of infectious diseases, went on to be, get a PhD in chemistry to do more research into things like Alzheimer's, was able to get, contribute to an experiment in space to test the impact of gravity on, on Alzheimer's. That's incredible. I mean, you didn't have to be around her very long or look at her resume very long to know that this was someone, you know, her academic accomplishments first rate. So that's hard to lose somebody who contributes so much to their profession. And I just found very kind. Pleasure to work with, always answering the phone, always connected, always responding. So I'm very sad. I think we really, really lost a great person, great family member, but, but also a really great board member.
I agree. And, you know, like I said, you know, Mr. Navarro and Dr. Rebray and I, we attended and you could see, I mean, we went, Mr. Navarro and I, we went onto the cemetery and it was just the whole grief that was there. I mean, just, and yeah, I mean, Sandra was always very helpful. I mean, she was always calling me, you know, giving me advice or telling me, you know, we should do this. The board should do this, you know, and I would always write down. It's just like she was so knowledgeable, energetic, yes. I mean, and even sometimes even when she made a flub or something or a mistake, she would always just laugh about it, you know? And I was very, I mean, I was, I mean, even when she came to board meetings, even when she felt like really sick, I mean, she would spend like all day, she was at a hospital taking tests and stuff. And then here she comes to a board meeting. I was like, Sandra, you know, you're, and even when she wasn't feeling well, you know, she still came and, um, but yes, it just, and she was very, spoke very highly of the high school. She really did. She said, this was really where I got, you know, for her science, you know? And she really wanted to pursue our students to continue on more with science. You know, she was really pushing the science, especially with, you know, with our female students, you know, because she felt that that would be just open doors for them. But, um, but yeah, it was, uh, I, um, I would really miss her, you know, it just really, just, um, and I really, I mean, even when she wrote that last text, you know, that we got from her, you know, saying that she received a best Mother's Day gift, which was a new liver. She said, this is the best Mother's Day gift I'm gonna get. I got a new liver.
I think in the same message, she was like, I'm gonna have you guys over at my house too.
Yeah, I know, yeah. She was, she was always a bead in everything. That was really the last text message that I got from her because, yeah, so we'll miss her.
I think that one thing I rem, sorry. Um, one thing that stands out to me is just her graciousness and her kindness. Um, every Mother's Day, or every Mother's Day, I think we only had two together, one together on the board. I would like wake up from a message from her Christmas, things like that. She just had that sense about her, she cared about everyone. Even going through the election before I even really got to know her, she was always very gracious and kind, asked great questions. And that's something I really appreciated about her as well.
I met Sandra. Before I ever knew her, she came into my day job with a friend proposing a new idea for a specialty ice cream store, using her chemistry background to develop specialty flavors. And she, they were gonna buy the, where Cool Creations is, they were gonna buy that building and renovate it into a, you know, really unique place and do totally unique offerings. And ultimately didn't happen, they couldn't come to an agreement with the owner. But her and her friend were really passionate about it and she loved that she could apply. I'm not sure how you apply chemistry to ice cream, but I.
She could do it.
Right, exactly. But I, I would have loved to have seen it, so.
Apparently there's a lot of chemistry involved in ice cream.
Well, if you ever had an opportunity to talk the chemistry of food. And as she used to say to me, you, as I, one time I was eating, you know, we were at Triple I, she said, you are participating in a chemical experiment right now. You know, just, she, then she would break it down, food, the enzymes, what's happening, you know? And in a way that even though it sounds absurd what I'm saying right now, I, it's like, tell me more, right? This is so fascinating.
I feel bad that I really didn't know Sandra, you know, other than here at the, uh, you know, in the board, in the meetings. So, uh, I prayed for her when I heard she was sick. And at my church, we have a prayer group, you know? So we put her on the list, you know? So, but.
Awesome. Well, thanks. Thanks, everybody.
Yes.
Unfortunately, we have to, with her absence, we do have to appoint someone for one more month to be the pro temp secretary. That's the person who does any kind of attestation, right? You know, anything that Ann and I sign or Ann signs, Veronica signs, the secretary has to kind of, kind of verify it, right?
And I think I already talked to Ms. Johnson and she agreed, so.
We got two of them tonight.
So we need a motion and we do need a vote on that, so.
All right, do I have a motion?
Second.
All right, to appoint Ms. Luann Johnson as the pro temp secretary position. All right, so it was motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Tease. All right, Ropel.
Tease?
Yes.
Johnson?
I guess I vote for myself, yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lopez Camila?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, moving on to our reports. We have no student report, we have no AFT report, ISB report. Ms. Johnson, do you have anything?
No, I haven't seen anything that's, uh.
Other than triple.
Right.
Triple I.
It's, it's July.
Yeah. People on vacation.
That's right. Okay, all right, well, thank you. And then foundation report, we have none? None, okay.
Do you have questions?
No, all right. Legislative report, Dr. Rebray.
All right, very quickly, I'll give you legislative report. Whatever happened to House Bill forty-six thirty-six? Well, you know, things happened, so I would say we, we, we had success. And then we had, I can say, bless you, Dr. Shaw. We put a lot of pressure, um, you know, I, I want to thank all of our local Senator Hastings, Ventura, Senator Ca- Kappel, uh, Roth, you know, great, Homer Township Supervisor, Steve Ballish was very helpful. So we, we put a lot of pressure on senators to, to pull House Bill forty-six thirty-six off. And, and indeed, it did not make it to the floor. But it, in the eleventh hour, the last bill that was approved, the revenue bill, I mean, the budget bill in the revenue section, the language to give oil refineries, the four oil refineries in Illinois a potential tax break, and I say potential because they might not take advantage of this. Remains yet to see if they will, and it's a long process, it's not a short process, to have parts of their facilities certified, a pollution control facility. It, and it's not an easy process either. Involves the Environmental Protection Agency in Illinois, lots of architecture. But that did get into the revenue bill as an expected stream of revenue for the state. So we'll have to see what that means here in our local backyard. My understanding of it was primarily a bill downstate, for a downstate facility, Wind River, right outside of St. Louis. More directly consequential to us is something that was enacted by the legislator, immediately signed into law, is law now, and that is Public Act one oh three zero five nine one. And this relates directly to life safety bonds. My understanding from legislators is this is really the response to the school construction grant program, which has not been revived, but it's designed to give local municipalities, local taxpayers, local board members, some tools in terms of life safety. And just to remind you, life safety, these are the type of things, you know, Mr. Sickbird is here tonight, that, that allow the human beings to exist in a school facility safely, comfortably, appropriately. Everything from security systems, parts of bathrooms, walls, structures, windows. You know, we'll talk about some masonry tonight. And obviously, you, you have to go through a process that anything you want to put on a life safety list and you would like to do life safety bonds that, you have to have that certified by ISBE. We just, Mr. Thompson and I can't just say, and Mr. Sickbird can't just say, this is life safety, we want to sell life safety bonds. Uh, you know, a lending institution won't sell those life safety bonds on behalf of the district without that, that approval. But the, there's, there's a couple of major changes the board should be aware of. Bonds, these life safety bonds now can have thirty years. Previously was only twenty or twenty-five. Why is that important? Anytime you take a loan amount, you stretch it out. Obviously, if you stretch it out over thirty years, school districts tend to be durable and around a long time. And if you stretch that payment out over thirty years, you lower the payment annually for the district. That lowers the, the obligation for taxpayers to cover that payment. It exempted, in a general sense, life safety bonds from our debt service extension. So connecting them to that debt service extension, which right now, you know, just in this moment, we would put it about thirty-five million, and I think that's off the page, but after November first. So it, it decouples that. I myself would, would not recommend, you know, going over our debt service extension unless there was something very extreme, just because that debt service extension kind of gives you almost like a credit card limit. It's a little bit of a guidance of how much debt do you really want to take on? And then, uh, life safety bonds will count against a, a total debt service limit. So it'll count as debt you've taken on, right? But it does not, like working cash bonds involve a petition period. If a school district does working cash bonds, there is a thirty-day petition period where citizens can do a petition movement to say, we, we don't approve. And there is a petition threshold, the number of signatures that, that can block the issuance of that working cash debt. That's not an avenue open in, in life safety bonds. So let me just pause there. Basically, new tools, greater financial flexibility, allows school districts to do more work in terms of their facilities, gives us, I think, some tools to lower the, the burden on taxpayers. But it doesn't give us a school construction grant program, so, which, you know, obviously we would advocate for.
Thank you. All right, uh, public comment follow-up.
Okay, public comment follow-up. Uh, we had seven individuals last time who spoke at public comment. I did something a little bit different. I actually have a slide deck for you. And I'm gonna walk through this relatively quickly because everyone here, we, you know, we're expecting some pretty bad weather to roll in, right? So if this is brief and if I move to some things, you know, uh, very quickly, it's only, you know, out of that sense. You might recall, we had, we had seven individuals. Each of those individuals had a companion slide deck, you know, a- as well. And so, uh, right now, we're still in the process of really pulling apart. There's so many questions about each of these slide decks. Very interesting, I've had two people, uh, two people who spoke that I've met with kind of took their slide deck apart to really understand it. And like anything, wow, there are some really amazing points of agreement. And then there's some points of disagreement, right? But I'm really amazed at, in some ways, and I'll show you in this display, how many common links between those public comments there are in your May twentieth resolution and working on a facility's master planning process. So just very quickly, uh, Mr. Tease, he recommended, especially, we also deal with the budget later tonight, just an overview of how we contain costs. So I'm gonna do that very quickly, just as a reminder to the board, of the way we, we generally outperform our budget every year. I think the bottom line of that is that folks around here try to come in under budget in every line item. You know, Mrs. Croy has done a fabulous job assembling the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five budget. We'll talk about that at the appropriate time. It's a line item. It allows the public to see what we plan to spend on. But we generally, um, outperform it. So I want to give a little bit of a financial context. The context of this is your resolution, where you had sort of a five-prong resolution that you've directed us to operate under. We also have our community survey report where we're still, you know, we've put on our website. We have over, you know, six hundred and ninety-four individual comments, which are just a rich source and reveal so many different, you know, opinions in the district. Then I want to cross-check that with, um, the, the public comments we had last year. Cost at, at budget control, so often my whole career, I've, you know, heard from taxpayers, hey, live within your means, and, and this is really how we do it. Now, I did this very fine picture of our English department because I think it's important, although we have had so much discussion about facilities, the greatest cost really in any school district? You will see district after district, if you look at financials, are the people. We're in a people industry. We almost, you know, anywhere in any given year, seventy to eighty percent of our entire budget is going towards salary benefits. So the way that we primarily manage costs is we manage human resources costs. I'll come back to that. Just a few things, a few touch points as we kind of get into budget season. Use of debt, we've kept debt low. In two thousand and twenty, we retired debt. Generally what school districts do when they retire debt is they just take on new debt to replace that debt. And taxpayers barely even notice that. We just keep on making that payment. In two thousand and twenty, right on the, the edge of the pandemic, we didn't know what that meant. And we made a decision with the board that we were not going to take on new debt to replace the debt we had just retired. Because we knew that if we took on that new debt, that would add to taxpayer burden. And we just didn't know what we were heading into. So we decided not to do that. Right now, we have, we have very low debt, which also helps, you know, your credit rating and your desirability. Because we had low debt, we recommended to you in two thousand and twenty-three in your levy that you do a debt service abatement. Basically, every single taxpayer would get a, a discount, so to speak. That's the best way that I can explain it in layperson's terms. And you might, as we get into levy season, be able to do a debt service abatement again thi- this year. But you felt it was important, there are certain strategies that can give tax relief to some taxpayers, sometimes applying, but you felt it was important that every taxpayer receive a, a discount. Our tax rate really, over the past fifteen years, has stayed in steady decline. If anyone looks at their tax bill, our rate's going to be very, very low in comparison. Uh, our per pupil spending, I'll show a chart, lowest in comparison, although I think we're getting outstanding outcomes. And then just, I'm gonna dig a little deeper into the highest cost, no matter what. Our highest cost year after year are, are human costs, people costs. Spending on human resources, you've seen this before, this is in comparison to other districts. Where the dark lines and the gray lines are other districts. If you look at districts we would compare ourselves to, you can see the trajectory of their spending on human resources. We have both, um, in terms of actual dollars per student and percent of operating expenses. We've added staff where we've needed to, but we've managed that so that our actual expenditure on human beings has remained flat, really, um, you know, since two thousand and twenty oh seven. Every year, we try to make sure that we don't have a sharp upward incline in, in human expenses. You know, we have a strong staff, we value our staff, they're our biggest investment. But we want to keep that moving steadily along, not climbing sharply, is what that, what that graph shows in comparison to other schools. Our per pupil spending, um, not all of these districts are districts like ours. I would not say that we are neutrer, um, and no, no slight to neutrer. Very different community, very different location. This is really just for comparison purposes of what's going on out there. What I picked were single township high schools. All of these are, um, this is not Glenbard that has four high schools, or Lincoln Way that has three, or District two thirty that has three, or District two eleven that has five high schools. These are just single standalone, um, uh, high school, township high schools. And, um, you see where we come in. We're, we're just, our annual spending's just a little bit higher than Lake Park, but our per pupil expense is significantly lower. One of the most important things that I see as an efficiency is adequacy. The state comes to us every year, we do a report, Dr. Greenan is in it, and we report our students, our staff. And the state of Illinois says to us, this is the level that you should be spending at. So if you think of a hundred percent is given your needs, given your students, hundred percent is the level that the state says we should be spending at. We come in underneath that at eighty-four percent. I take that as a measure of efficiency because we're operating below what our anticipated need in human resources is. As you can see, all of those comparison districts are operating well above their adequacy level. And I just think that that, and we all have the same academic rating because the academic rating on the Illinois State School Report Card is not just test scores or not just graduation rate, it's several different factors. Bargaining agreements, you've already seen this. Our bargaining agreements, both the previous one and the past one, uh, we had a great partnership with our, our union. Our union was willing to bargain with us during the pandemic. Many unions were not willing, so our unions accepted the terms and conditions then, which changed, economic conditions changed radically. But our settlements, you can see comparatively, are at the lower end of, of comparisons. But our settlements, you can see comparatively, are at the lower end of of comparisons schools. And we have to look down the road at Lamont and Joliet and Lincoln Way, who are right now outperforming our 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 salary schedule. I'm just gonna go through it quickly. So those are all different ways that salaried. And then finally, one of the things that we do is healthcare benefits. We gain a tremendous amount of efficiency by being in a consortium. We are self-insured, so that gives us some real benefits, meaning we pay our own claims uh, in that consortium. And we are constantly, every meeting that we have, I chair that, uh, Mrs. Croy does a great job, we are constantly, um, re-establishing our PPO, setting up high deductible healthcare, changing the the pharmacy to be more efficient, asking people to join preventative health cli- uh, uh, programs. We're implementing Galileo this coming fall, which is complete online medicine, so that people will access a doctor, not put it off, and then have a a higher claim. So those are all, all things we're doing. Um, and then the community survey, you know, you have a community survey, we'll talk about it if we get a chance a little bit later on. You know, I think the sentiments, you have an action plan that I think goes along quite a bit with your resolution. It starts with making the necessary, the required, the most urgent repairs at Central, and then moves on asking for kind of a a much longer, you know, ten to twenty-year plan uh, for facilities. That asks for transparency and then asks for, uh, community involvement. So if we look at the, I know the public, the board has had the individual responses, very nuanced. It really reveals what Jerome McKibben said to us, that maybe hard to get to a consensus, right? Because there are wildly different opinions, uh, throughout this, right? And I think it's the role of the board to try to find something that we can stand on. So really quickly, just in the comments, I kind of, on the left, i- are are the different things you had in your resolution, on the right are things we heard in public comment. Now, I will be honest with you, um, as always, looking to sit down with public commenters, I've sat down with two. Um, Mark Gowron really is a proponent of a new freshman building. He's done some cost estimates on that. He believes that belongs here, um, behind East Campus, right? Uh, had a conversation with him, I'll come to it in a minute. Carmen Morello really, uh, did his, his segment was, how do we use, uh, fund balances and how do we use debt, basically? Uh, sat down with him, had a really good conversation last, last Friday. And the check means, hey, we have agreement, and the ax means we we don't have agreement, right? So debt utilization, let's just start there. The board, um, you know, recommended that that, you know, twenty-six point two in debt utilization, but we haven't sold any debt at all. We'll, we'll sell that debt if and when it is is advantageous to the board. Um, so, uh, there was agreement, we had a speaker say, there should be a holistic process to look at all of our finance facilities, and we're doing that. So we agree on that. Um, facilities master planning will meet Wednesday night. Where we disagree is with the use of debt. Um, uh, you know, the consequence of the referendum, was that a blanket statement that the community does not want us to invest any debt in Central at all? Or was that a message that they didn't want to fund eighty-five million dollars worth of debt? So we've got a disagreement there that I think we could, we could work out. Uh, the role of fund balances, uh, the board has made a commitment to use fund balances. Uh, when I met with, uh, Carmen, um, he proposed a more aggressive use of fund balances. You're thinking of ten to twelve million, Carmen is thinking of twenty million and using some debt and, uh, possibly going for another referendum for new construction. So there's an agreement that we should use fund balances. There's a disagreement about how aggressive, there's a disagreement about whether we should go for a referendum, and, um, there's a disagreement about the combination of of, um, fund balances a- and debt, and whether or not we go for new construction. Is this the right time, given our our district's referendum history? Alternative revenue sources, check. There's complete agreement. Everyone agrees, we should look for alternative revenue, uh, sources, because those alternative revenue sources, um, are not, you know, anything except for assisting us and don't create taxpayer uh, burden. Um, annual allocation. The board, um, has said that there does need to continue to be an annual allocation to Central, to East. You know, as you know, right now, we're in a, in a construction project at Central, where we're using fund balances to finish off the ceiling work, um, that needs to be done there to to open on August nineteenth, and we believe we'll all open on August nineteenth. We know more about that building now than we've ever e- ever known about that building. Um, so there is an agreement that that, there is maintenance repair that needs to be done. There is a disagreement about how much of that should go into, um, Central. Uh, rebuild balances, the board, uh, directed us to have a plan over five to ten years, if we use cash, you know, if we use fund balances, there has to be a plan to rebuild those, those fund balances. Um, that just wasn't, I put a question mark, because that just wasn't a focus of our public commenters. That just, just didn't, didn't come up. Doesn't mean it can't be a conversation. Um, I think you're thinking down the line in ten years, just didn't come up. And then finally, there was a presentation on, um, annexation, detachment, that would break up the district. And, you know, I put an ax there because I think that's a hard disagreement. The board does not believe that there should be annexation or detachment, it's litigious, it's lengthy, it's long, um, it's divisive. Um, and so what I've been trying to do is, as I meet with people and talk to people, kind of compare the board resolution, the public comment plans. I would say this is a draft, because I can't see I fully understand all of these, you know, when you get, get these, you wanna go deeper, you wanna ask a ton of questions, and I look forward to doing that. Um, so, you know, what I'm sharing here is, you know, board resolution made twentieth, aims at minimal to no tax impact on the community by managing fund balances and debt. There is a proposal, if you went forward with new construction, that that is a significant increase in spending, and if you went forward with any kind of detachment or annexation, that's, that's litigation. Um, your resolution is not contingent on a referendum. It is a directive to us to be working within the tools that we have at at, uh, you know, what is necessary, what is is absolutely, um, required. The public comments that we heard would require a referendum because, uh, new standalone building that I- that students occupy requires an Illinois, uh, a referendum. Um, board resolution is, does have a long-term planning, planning process. Um, public comment plans had both debt and cash reserves, maybe more aggressive, right, than than the board is feeling. But I think we can, you know, sort that out. These are two tools that that are great tools to manage finances. The board resolution, kind of by focusing right now on our current East and Central, everyone benefits. Everyone in the district is beneficiary, uses, all children coming through use these both those facilities. My concern about, um, annexation or detachment or dissolution, that's a very, it's a very hot topic. Um, I don't think that there are many people that would want to abandon a hundred and fourteen years of Porter history. You know, you, if you look at these comments, there's quite a bit of that, and you have to attend to that, too. Um, board resolution takes a long-term look at fund balances and how you can grow them back. A concern that I have is that deferring maintenance at a place like Central, hoping that the community would approve new construction, that really was the strategy that was used in two thousand and six, seven, eight, nine, nine, and eleven, was the hope that if a referendum issue was repackaged, um, and we defer maintenance, surely the the community would approve it eventually. And Lance did a, a spot on that. So questions, I know that's longer than I I usually do, but just, all of that is a desire to really analyze, um, where you're at, where these recommendations at are are at, um, and and just dig into them deeply and and do it over the long term. Any questions?
You know, one of the things that I have, um, suggested to both Dr. McBride, as well as some of the members of this group, is to get together as a group, as a group, and fully vet all the different presentations that have come up and all the different aspects of that. I don't have any, uh, thoughts that it would be a short meeting. It would likely be a very long meeting. Um, but I think that it is valuable, because, you know, as I've shared with with others, there was a lot of work done in these, into these potential plans. And, um, I think it's worth exploring them and making sure that, um, those members feel heard and that, you know. Personally, I I take their plans very seriously as far as trying to evaluate them, trying to understand them, and trying to to sort through all the different components. So I, I've suggested that they throw out some dates to Dr. McBride to try and come to a workshop, almost like setting, so that, you know, we have numbers and all of that kind of stuff at hand to fully vet it.
So you're suggesting a meeting of the full board and not just the community?
No, just simply with Dr. McBride, staff members that have that information, two board members could obviously attend. But then just an idea for consideration, um, by the board is, once that is accomplished, to do something like what Dr. McBride has just presented, uh, with that group as a, as a joint presentation, um, to be able to have that discussion. Um, and allow us to kind of see both sides of these coins, um, to be able to to fully and robustly discuss it, um, because I think, I think it's important. And I think that a lot of that can be integrated into the full facilities planning, uh, work. And I would certainly recommend that if we, if we are able to accomplish that, that our, uh, advisory council members attend that, for sure, so that they can hear all of that discussion, um, as they are, you know, contemplating and ultimately recommending or ultimately advising us as the board on some future directions, ten, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years into the future. So I think I would offer that for the board's consideration as to whether or not they, they think that there's an, an opportunity for that discussion.
Are you thinking about like a town hall meeting?
I don't think it'll be a town hall meeting, but I think it can be integrated into the the board's format, um, at a regular meeting, or we could have a special meeting, depending on how long it could go, um, a special meeting just to discuss that.
Where would we hold that? It seems that there's a lot of people, if you have the advisory, you have the public, people from the presentations, the board.
We could hold it in the cafeteria, we could hold it in the auditorium, we could hold it here, you know, depending on, on who would ultimately want to come. We could certainly make accommodations. We certainly have places that can host, you know, those types of of events, but I, I think that there is some, some value there to be had.
I know people say when you do stuff like that, you need to hold it on neutral ground, you know? So find some facility.
Yeah, when we, when we do public, you know, public comment, the, the design between, behind it, is really equal access, so that, you know, anybody, any citizen, whoever they are, you know, in our district, any community member, you know, that resides within the dista- district, can have equal access to you as board members, so that, you know, that's the five minutes. But anytime anyone presents anything in five minutes, there's quite a few ideas in there. So it's designed to be, hey, something that we're concerned. And we always, with, you know, my administrative team back here, we always want that opportunity to sit down and and dig into what that five minutes, what, what does that mean? And we'll do it anywhere, you know, wherever, wherever's convenient, wherever we can get the job done, you know? You know, what I just presented is, I would have to mark as draft, because I've, I've only of the seven, you know, had the opportunity to sit down with 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 two people. And this is a long-term process, you know? This is not a, a, a decision tomorrow process. Certainly, you've already decided that you're not seeking a referendum on the November ballot, that's been decided. You've directed me to use cash reserves and to start looking at life safety debt. Um, that, that's been decided. But where we go from there, that is, you know, a dynamic process that should involve lots of, lots of people. The only way I know how to do that is roll up your sleeves and really sit down and 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 dig into it and and make sure that, you know, things that are understood, you know, can can be understood. Usually, in those meetings when I've done that, uh, with with many different types of people, there's always something that each of us didn't realize, right? Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Tease, also. All right, public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comment section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy Two colon Two Three O and Policy, and Policy Eight colon Three O, available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. At this point, we had none. All right, communications, there were none. And then you have the Freedom of Information request, there were two of them there. All right, moving on to our approval items. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June seventeen, uh, twenty-twenty-four board meeting and, uh, which includes also the, the closed session meeting minutes of June seventeen, twenty-twenty-four? Uh, second. All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to those, uh, regular meeting, meeting minutes of June seventeen, twenty-twenty-four? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Tease?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez, can you?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the July twenty-twenty-four board expenses?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Tease. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Tease?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez, can you?
Yes.
All right, treasures reports.
All right, we were thinking that we would have Mrs. Croy join us. Uh, you know what, Natalie, for the regular questions, um, related to the treasures report, this is the first treasures report of the new year, uh, so any questions board members have. Um, but also, down on the agenda, we have two major financial issues. One, the the tentative budget, which is the start of the budget process and talking about that. And then, two, a, a resolution the board has to approve later, um, regarding, and I'm glad Mr. Sickbird is here, with a, a change order that goes over ten percent of the bid cost on the project we're working on in Central. So we'll, we'll, we'll unpack that, um, a little bit. First and foremost, I want to compliment, uh, Mrs. Croy. Coming up on June thirtieth, ending one fiscal year and starting another one, is, I don't know if we have anybody else here who is in the, you know, business manager business, that is difficult business. And, you know, it's a, it, there's just no other way to put it. It's, it's right, my friends, it's, it's a pressure cooker down in in her office to close out one year, start, uh, you know, another year. And I, you know, I can't say enough about the good work that, that Stephanie's done. It's very, very hard. This is really her, her challenging time, one year. Um, so I'm grateful that you did that work and you did a great job. Um, any, anything you wanna pick up with the treasures report, Stephanie?
Um, well, well, Dr. McBride said that this is the first report of the new year. It's really on the end of the last year, right? So what you'll see is the June thirtieth numbers, unaudited, of course, because our auditor is scheduled to come here the first week of, um, August, I think the fifth and sixth or something, they'll be in, in our office. Um, and and so you'll see that we've collected fifty-two percent of the next year's levy, which is significant, which is, of course, if you look at the cash flow report, you see we've now spent, spent, spent down, and then we collected the second install, or the first installment of that, um, uh, new levy. So, um, we did go ahead and invest that out, tried to do it right away by June thirtieth, too, so you'll see our investment reports longer again, um, so that it's scheduled out as we need the funds, the expenditures or the investments will mature. Um, and while the interest rates were still highest, right, that we wanna turn around and invest that and, um, that allows us to obviously earn the most interest on it and then spend more, you know, in in the appropriate places. So, um, that, I mean, that's really, um, the highlights. The other page is, you know, our statement position, you know, because we have collected all that revenue that's intended to pay for the next few months, um, you'll see we're back up to eleven months, um, total overall cash on hand at the end. Um, you'll see that the operations and maintenance fund, however, is down to seven. Um, and that's expected based on all of the stuff that we've got, um, in the, you know, in the works going on right now. And, um, there'll be more spending, obviously, um, in this new fiscal year, um, as we start to talk about the budget. While Burgland has been doing all this work, their first payment actually is on the agenda for board approval in this treasures report, right? So, um, none of, none of those payments to Burgland for this most recent bid were in June. They're starting to be paid in July. So that whole bid, that whole contract will be paid in the new fiscal year, right? Because the district does report all these things on a cash basis. Are there any questions on any of that, what's been reported?
So not necessarily on what you just reported on, but I heard you say the word audit. So while we were going through the referendum process, I did see and hear a lot of people saying that we should have an independent auditor come in and look at our books and things like that. And we do.
We have to.
We have to.
Annually every year.
So I know I received my letter already saying, you know, what mine is a board member perspective is. Can you talk a little bit about that audit process and kind of so that the public knows, like, what we go through as a district with that?
Governmental entities are required to have a a audit every year. And it is an independent audit firm. And they, so what they do, there's actually two pieces to our audit. One is the financial audit. They'll come in and they'll look at exactly that treasurer's report you just looked at, that financial report. They will look at all of those pieces. They will look at all the cash accounts and say, is that really what we're reporting is cash? Is that really what we have? All those investments, is that if we're reporting as as this is cash, is that what we really have? They'll look at all of the revenue streams and the expenditures. They don't test every single, I mean, obviously, the board sees all of the expenditures, right? The treasurer's report is pages and pages of all these checks cut. What they do is they do a statistical sample. I give them check ranges, they do statistical samples of all the expenditures. Then that they, on top of that, if they found anything that was questionable or concerning, then they would do further testing, right? So they base their, it's a statistical analysis of, we're gonna do a random sample. As long as everything's good, we're good. And they do a risk analysis also. So they walk through all of our controls. And what do we do? How many signatures do you have? Who reviews things? What does the board approve? All of that kind of stuff. And then they they also, all of the big items, they will one hundred percent test. So for example, our property taxes are our biggest revenue source. They're gonna completely tie that out to an independent source, the county. Is this what you, what they recorded? Is that what they said that the county said they gave us, right? All of the grant revenue, same thing. On the expenditure side, they'll do the similar thing with some of the pieces, right? Some of the bigger expenses, they'll look at all of it. Capital items, for example, right? Capital purchases. They'll want to see the expenditures for those things. They'll want to test a bid. They do all of those various things to get a competence level to be able to issue a report that they haven't, that they don't, they never discovered any material weaknesses or problems with our audit, right?
If they do, the board receives a statement of finding.
Right. Then there's a second audit, there's two pieces of it. That's the financial audit. They're checking all of our financial reports, our statement of position, our statement of revenue, statement of expenditures. Then they're also doing what's called a single audit. And that's required because we receive more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal funds, right? And that is a more detailed audit of the largest grants that we have. So this year, they're probably going to be testing S R funds. And they usually test idea funds, because those are two of our largest grants. And those are more detailed in, they check every expenditure report. And they do testing of, are the funds being spent the way that they were supposed to be spent? Compared to the budget, compared to the requirements of the grants. So there are two separate reports that they give opinions on. So, yeah, no problem.
You know, and a simple way to to think of it is, after a year's worth of financial reports that you see, are the numbers that you're seeing as board members and the public can access, are those accurate, actual, true?
Right.
Right? That's really the bottom line. And do we in our business office have the appropriate procedures and controls to make sure that money is handled correctly, appropriately, honestly?
And then each of us as board members, we also get that, you know, we all get the audit report so we can see it ourselves.
Right, that you see it. And then also, if you suspect for any reason that the administration has not been truthful with you, that that you would like, you know, that explorer, here's what you thought was was not.
They independently send letters to attorneys. They independently send letters to each board member for all that, for that reason.
Just wanted to really quickly show the five-year financial forecast. You know, we use this quite a bit as kind of a map forward. It does reflect a decline in our fund balances, a strategic decline, you know, that we've talked about over over a period of time. So we bake that into some of our assumptions, you know. This year, the use of fund balances, future uses of fund balances. After, you know, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, everything is projected, right? It's it hasn't been audited. The reason why it says that is it's not been confirmed. It's literally just a projection with a set of assumptions. But I think it's important, you know, to keep to keep an eye on.
So the other couple of things that I'm gonna point out in the treasurer's report is, there's, I just annually give the board an update on our procurement card rebate. You know, we do have a number of P cards, essentially credit cards with tighter controls, right? It 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 doesn't circumvent any of the procedures that I just talked about. It's just a different form of payment. It it works out nicely for when our staff members take students on trips, right, for sports and things. That way, we don't have to have staff members paying things out of pocket places. That's, it's one of the the most common things that it's used for. One of the other quick things I would like to point out is you will see next month a couple of changes to a couple of things in this report. The student activities and the athletic boosters, we've July first switched software. So you're gonna, those reports are gonna look a little different next month. You'll see a little bit more information, actually, than you saw before on those. So that's, I just want to point that out now. I'll point it out again when you actually see those reports next month. And then I also am considering some revisions or actually additions to some of these, the financial reports. The statement of revenue right now is in categories that reflect what the state reporting requirements are, local funds, state funds, federal funds. But it really doesn't explain what those funds are. So I'm, you know, making some consideration of changing that. And and you'll see that when we switch to the budget now. So if there's no other questions on the treasurer's report, I would like to switch to the budget.
Do you want me to go to the the actual draft budgets?
Do you mind?
No, not at all. And and as we do that, there's also a really interesting document that Stephanie loaded in the treasurer's report, it it it's, I believe here, too, that that is the the process. You know, we'll vote on the resolution down and action items. What I think is important to remember is there are there are two processes that we're about. The budget is a different process than the levy. So between now and September, we will go through the budget process. And September is when you legally have to approve a twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget, no longer tentative. Then we begin the levy process. The levy process is how do we pay for this budget? We've said that we're going to list these total expenditures. Where will we get the the funding to do that? The important thing that I would ask board members right now is, you get this very nice overview sheet that I'm gonna turn over to Stephanie. But after it, you just have ev- literally, you know, fifty-one pages of everything we intend to spend. And just like any kind of budget, yeah, there's some revenue included in here. But really, this is a declaration of everything from salaries for English teachers to contributions we're required to make to pension systems, to insurance, to equipment, to software. You name it, it's in there. And it's a public document for any member of the public to say, I want to know more about those expenditures. And certainly for the board to understand, what what is this? What are you spending this money on? So right now, the phase that I'd ask us all to dial in is those line items. Any questions over the next two months about what we intend to spend? This document began in January, when you authorized Stephanie to start putting these line items. And, you know, I'm gonna turn it over to her to describe her own process and just what she wants you to dial into.
Thank you. So what you're seeing here is the the tentative budget summary, which I I have presented previously, but I've kind of flipped it around. So that, like Dr. McBride and I have said, to to really put the focus more on the expenditures, right? Because that's what, the way the process, and I've I've kind of explained this way, the way it works before, is we figure out what the district needs to spend to operate over the next year. Then we fill in whatever's estimated receipts, right? Like, we already know we expect half of, well, forty-eight percent of the the twenty twenty-three levy, because that's what was approved last year, last December. That'll be collected. And then we have our estimates of all the other, you know, school fees and federal grants, state grants, other little local revenue pieces, right? We know we're gonna get those things. Then there's left this hole of, here's what we're gonna spend, here's estimated revenue, but what's missing? What's missing is when we start, when we get to that, the tentative levy discussion, right? At this point, in order to balance the budget, I have to estimate what that might be, right? That's not approving it. That's my estimation as the the treasurer of the district to say, well, this is what I think we'll need to balance it, right? So flipping this around, then, you'll see the top part talks about all of the expenditures, the salaries, the benefits, the purchase services, supplies, et cetera. And there's a summary in in the memo that kind of tells you what those things are, right? The salaries based on the collective bargaining agreements and the the items that the board approved in June, right? All of the non-bargaining salaries. Benefits, right? All of the health, dental, life insurance, state pension fund contributions that were required to contribute. Oh, those social security, Medicare, those are what we call benefits, right? Purchase services are things like our special education contracted busing services or web-based software is considered that in that category. Occupational therapists, speech therapists, physical therapists, auditors, liability insurance. All those are purchase services. Supplies include things like Chromebooks. Chromebooks, while there are significant purchase, are less than five hundred dollars apiece, and that's the district's capitalization policy. So they are considered a supply for incoming freshman students, as well as various other supplies, right? All our custodial supplies, office supplies, things like that. Capital outlay. So capital outlay is an interesting term, right? Capital outlay is is the definition of anything that would be capital in nature, including equipment, right? So our school buses, capital outlay. Drivers' education vehicles that we're trying to replace, because they're all old at this point. Work trucks, other small equipment purchases, anything over five hundred dollars, it's an equipment, right? So a three D printer in the robotics or a C T E classroom, things like that. And then capital projects, fund expenditures, that's where the Burgland contract goes, because it's bigger and needs to be recorded separately in a capital projects fund, okay? So that's kind of like the summary and over, you know, overview of the expenditures. And then the details of those are behind. If you were to look in the details, the items that are, that look like negative numbers, they're revenue. And that's because they're credits. It's a debit accounting. Credits are shown as negatives, the the debits, the expenditures are listed as positives. So if you look through all that detail, the expenditure pieces will be positive numbers and then the revenue will all be negative. The estimated revenue I have now at the bottom. So this is the format I was briefly talking about. Instead of potentially showing local sources, state sources, federal sources, which really doesn't mean anything to anyone but, say, me, this is an attempt at maybe a different format of listing revenue where it gives you more of an idea of the bigger pieces. You know, listing the pieces of the property tax levies, listing the evidence-based funding specifically, which is the the state general aid. And then other federal state grants kind of lumped together if they're not big enough, right? But this way, it gives you a better idea of really how much is the the tax piece. And so the way that this has is laid out is exactly how I talked through. Expenditures, revenue that I'm pretty sure I'm gonna get, or we're gonna get. Transfers between funds as required, because there's two required transfers. One, the board already approved, related to the abatement of property taxes for debt service. So we have to move money to cover that payment. And then we also have to move money from operations and maintenance to cover the capital projects funds. And then, okay, what's left? What's left is a projected deficit if we don't approve a twenty twenty-four levy, okay? So that's what, can you scroll up for just a little bit, Dr. McBride? The other way, I'm so sorry, down, I mean. Thank you. The, okay, little, perfect, right there. The twenty twenty-four, right under the transfers. Immediately under the transfers is a, here's what the budget deficit would be if we did not pass, if the board doesn't approve a levy in December, right? So then I estimate what fifty percent of a levy would be. And then show the expenditures to be paid from fund balances, which is those planned spend down Dr. McBride's talking about, right? We do plan to spend some of the fund balance on the central repairs. And then we get to the bottom, okay, what does that look like then for the estimated ending balances? Is this, does this help the process in any way? Are there questions about this format or any of the data that is presented for tentative budget? It's not final, so we still have time.
So just so I connect the dots related to the central stuff. Any life safety bonds that would be executed either this year, this year? Are those captured separately or are those planned?
They're not in this at this point, because at this point, the board has not directed me to include anything in the budget for that.
So that would be a budget amendment
Yes.
later on, had that, or if that, given when that happens.
Correct.
Similarly, if the board said, you know, we want to move forward with the CCC, we want to move forward with Lockport Academy.
Got it.
We want to use fund balances for that, that would also involve a budget amendment. Using those tools either now or later.
So the things that I know are are occurring are what's in this budget. There isn't even, you know, a projected spend down for future capital projects of the ten to twelve million that the board's talking about. That's not really reflected in here either, because we don't really have a timeline of that. I don't know what that timeline is, we're gonna end up spending that. What I know is we're gonna spend money on this Burgland contract, because we've already committed, the board is already committed to it. So that is in here. Any potential change orders that we're unaware of may not be in here. But the ones we're aware of, I I I believe I have them all.
Right. And and the simple way to think about that is, you know, you might in your personal finance say in one year, you're going to purchase a car. You're gonna take out an auto loan. You would not take out that auto loan today, start paying it, and then go buy the car next year. So you want the debt proximate to what you're spending on. Similarly, with the cash reserve, you say, you know, I want to purchase a house. I've saved up money. I want to put that that actual money I have in the bank as a down payment. You wouldn't do that in a year or a year and a half in advance. You'd do it proximate to the purchase of the home. So we want to get close to that inflection point where we have, you know, something that we're actually spending money on. One example is life safety bonds. We have to go through that whole process, Mr. Sickbird will, you know, work with Bill, to get that certified. And that'll be a process. And we don't know on the other end what ISBE will say. Yes, we certify these as life safety projects. And then we'll be able in October and November to go out for bid. And even when we go out for bid, that's not paying for that, those services that'll take place in the summer.
Because we're still in the capital, the master, capital master planning process. You know, I made no assumptions that I haven't been given by the board of what might be in here towards that, right? Because I I don't know where we're gonna land. That would be a reason potentially to have to amend it come spring, right? Just like we did this year, right? With things unforeseen, when the board approved in September, happened after that, and we approved the amended budget. So I would, I would suspect that if the board decides sometime during the year that we want to start engaging in some of those bigger pieces within this twelve months, then we would have to amend this. It is also possible that the board will decide to start doing those things, but it wouldn't necessarily affect this budget. It might affect the next budget, depending on when things would start and how significant those expenditures would be, right? So that that would all depend on what the board decides and which direction we go. And the amendment process is the same. So we would have to tentatively, we pretty much would have to know by April. Are we are we looking at needing an amendment to the budget or not? Because I would need to present a tentative budget. There's thirty days that has to be between the two. So latest would be May, as long as there's thirty days between the May meeting and the June, and the June meeting, right? So, yeah, that's where, that's where. Does this, I'm sorry, does this format help understand the process? Or, because I'm I'm totally open to suggestions. Would it help to show more monthly reports with revenue broken out differently like this as opposed to the categories it was already in?
Monthly sounds interesting, just seeing which are busy. Do you think it would be any different?
Well, what would do, all I'm talking about is like re-categorizing the revenue, right? So instead of the three cat, the three buckets of revenue, you'd see a little bit deeper breakdown of the revenue. That would, you know, that's what I was thinking, but.
I just appreciate your walk through this.
It was definitely a high opening.
It's a lot of money and a lot of numbers. So I understand, like, well, it might make perfect sense to me the way it was before. Dr. McBride and I thought that maybe really focusing on, here's what we're spending. And here's what we think we'll get. And if we, how the levy impacts that, right? Like where it fits.
Levy talks to this, this process. And thing, you know, one of the, you know, you obviously don't have to decide these things. Nice thing about having a tentative is over the next two months, some core questions. When you curl up and look through all of these expenses, do these, do these make sense to you? Do you have questions about these? Do you see something that just, you want to know more about, like to hear more about? And or hey, how do we present this? How do we display this? What are some ways that we can help folks who don't have the acumen that, that Stephanie has to, to understand what it is that we're doing?
Because we have one board meeting in between, right? So we'll have August in between. And if the board members have questions that they send to Dr. McBride on any of these pieces, um, I can definitely cover those. You know, in August, so.
Do you mind if we jump to the resolution? If, if folks are ready? Are you ready for that in the treasurer's report? And Eric was, Eric Sickbert was nice enough to be here to, to jump in on that. You know, we'll ask you to vote for it a little bit further. Really what this comes down to is in the, it's interesting, the 1928 section of Central is the section that's giving us the hardest time. And at every single turn of this project, you as a board, me, Eric, Bill, Stephanie, others, Carrie Green. You know, my analogy for this is you have a clog sink. And you decide to get underneath that sink and pull that P-trap out and unclog it. And as you're in there, you notice that the valves that supply water are all leaking. Do you really jump into replacing those valves? So at every, you know, portion of this project of replacing the ceilings that have to be replaced because based on what WJE told you, there was the potential for any of those ceilings of that same construction method to fail, given the kind of weather we're having right this second. Right? And so you as a board said, taking that out. Well, now the building's been exposed in a way it hasn't been exposed since it was initially created. And so that's allowed us to, to see things. And they ask ourselves the question, do we have the time, the manpower, the wherewithal, the, the funds to address them? Tonight, we're asking you, um, to approve, I, I believe it's eight to 10 lentils. These are, these are a base on which brick sits. Everyone concerned, structural engineers, DLA, Burgland Construction believes we have the opportunity. We have people on site. We believe this should be changed. If you go by on 12th Street, you'll see the scaffolding, which is called shoring, kind of keeps that intact as people play with bricks. You know, the idea is as people are pulling bricks out and exposing these lentils, you need something to brace that kind of investigation. And eventually that work. And we're recommending to the board that you move forward, not to exceed 550,000. We believe this project will come in at 494 in the end of the day. But what we want to avoid is that if it, if we said to you, that's the, the limit and it's over, you would have to come back and, and do it on the resolution. In essence, the law here is we have a $3.2 million project bid. If we go 10% over that on a single change order, you have to do a standalone resolution on it. Eric, anything to add or Stephanie or questions that you have, you know, for DLA? We can, we have Eric come up to the, the table.
I think this is a great opportunity to get ahead on some of the renovation that likely would have happened regardless as a part of the central school project, the life safety stuff that we have talked about for, uh, months. And being able to have that exposed and be able to have it shored and be able to investigate a number of other areas to make sure that we're taking care of those things before the ceilings get covered back up and the walls get covered back up. I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to be able to resolve some of those things earlier.
And this is, and this is the section that's going to be blocked off, right? The students will not be.
It is. This will be the section that we're going to need a little bit of extra time. We're going to go probably until Labor Day, one week to finish, one week to clean. Uh, it'll be safe. Students won't be in danger. Schools reopen all the time, still under construction. Uh, we have good plan for where those classes will go, just for two week period, really nine days. Next summer, we'll likely be coming to you with even more top planning. You know, it's, it's a masonry building and more work. You know, this is a fine, I've done some, you know, just investigating with Bill Thompson. If you have a masonry building, you're going to have a long lineage of looking at it. We use, right there on Main Street, Gilkerson, they've been at that building every year, every summer for a decade. Um, just doing necessary mortar, brick, uh, cement, cornice work, you know, just to keep up. It's part of an ongoing process. We can be more aggressive this summer because we have the manpower and we have the exposure like, like Lance said.
Just to go off of Dan's comment, I know she talked about, um, blocking off and then you mentioned Labor Day. School's still opening on time as of now.
School, we, at school will, we're going to release some information. Want to have you here at first that school will open on August 19th. That's, you know, the plan, of course, unless there's something none of us are thinking of. But DLA agrees, Peace Force, Structural Engineers, um, Burgland, I can't say enough about working with them. They have been excellent. Uh, they believe that all of that, you know, will, will get completed and will be opened on, on August 19th.
And as far as those classrooms, it would just be a matter of relocating students to a different classroom for that period of.
Different classroom to start out, maybe the port, maybe the cafeteria, a temporary nine day within the building. And then they'll return to that classroom.
Okay.
Any questions about this change order? I know took care of a lot that you'll vote on later, but it's just being thorough.
All right.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Great job.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the June 2024 treasurer's report?
Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Mr. Please. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Lopez, Kneebah?
Yes. Moving on superintendent reports.
My superintendent report is as long as you would like it to. Uh, you've heard already a lot about Central. And if you have any questions about, about Central, I was in the building, you know, I can mention a few board members today. It's just, we're at that place, right? Eric, where it, it seems like every, every two or three days, it's a different place. Um, that's now you're in that part of the project where we're moving that quickly. Um, we plan, like I said, tomorrow to release a video update, to release some information. Mrs. Castillo, Mr. Slager have been working on that just to give some people some visuals too. It's nice to see the actual drywall hanging where that, um, legacy plaster ceiling was hang, hanging. You know, incredible and the finishings and just, just the way it looks, it's a nice new clean look. Last month and, and then also I have a very big announcement. We have, we have two July birthdays in my superintendent report. So, uh, Dr. Shaw, we're very glad, the administrative team, we're very glad you were born. Uh, Mrs. Lopez, Kneebah, so I have a few things over here from us to you. We're glad you were born in our tradition. So I'll, I'll get these down to you too. So happy birthday if I, if I don't, don't see you, okay?
What days?
24th, 27th.
Yeah.
So you guys are two days apart. That's incredible.
Right, right. And the only thing in here is the community survey report. You know, we received this last month. We, as, as requested, you know, we, we asked Innovate K-12 to give us the individual responses. And really what I would share with you is our facility master planning process. We're using this as a guiding document. You know, we received, um, you know, this general aggregate, this general facilities plan, uh, reaction. You know, I think one of the things that I find most interesting is sort of the, what K-12 Insight is saying that the data is telling you this is what folks are saying. You know, one, two, three, four, five, these are the steps that this data is suggesting that we take. And you go deeper into the individual comments and, um, you know, they're rich and they're powerful and they represent the diversity of the district. I know board members of almost 700 people, we had 300 people who put their name and their email address and said, hey, I want to be involved more. And you've been busy responding to those people. So I just, I don't know if there's any discussion or, or observations or something that you've seen that you'd want to discuss tonight. But this is going to be a living document. You know, we'll be coming back to it frequently.
I did too.
All the individual.
All the comments.
I thought that a lot of people.
How many copies of that do you have, like in paper form?
Just this one.
Just that one?
Yes. We can get you one.
I think Kathy. I requested a copy. I was like, I can't.
It's also on the website.
It is.
Yeah. Would you like a paper copy? Is it easier?
I would like.
I need a paper copy.
I did. I can't read that much.
I think a paper copy would be.
Okay. We can get that to you.
Yeah, what I did is I, I sort of, um, I, uh, I printed out the ones that, um,
The section you were.
The section that I was working on, I printed those out because I really wanted, you know, to just, once I was responding back to them, I wanted to look at their comments. But yes.
This is just a lot of ink to print out on the.
Well, yeah. And what's, yeah, no, absolutely. And what's, what's amazing, I, and I would just tell you this, Innovate K-12 told us this, I would tell you this. You know, a survey where you ask people to write, that is, is rich. And, you know, the fact that 700 people bothered to sit down and write about two paragraphs, almost a page. Um, that, that provides just some amazing information and, and high engagement. Right? You know, like I said, my primary takeaway is that, that we, we do have that diversity of opinion. That we were told two years ago that Jerome McDonald, McKibben, excuse me, said that's the central issue you face as a board. Is that it's tough to get people to consensus. It's just, it's just tough. I was talking with Carmen Morello on Friday in my office, one of our presenters last month. He just absolutely believes the voters would get behind, um, a new freshman center at our property at Homer Glen. What a cool use of that property, right? But then you can see as many comments in here where people strongly disagree with that sentiment. Right? You know, we've heard from a variety of people, the idea of adding on here or building, you know, a separate freshman building. But then you see as many comments where people want, you know, um, some kind of preservation of Central. So you are not in an envious position of navigating. But I think it also gives you an idea of how do we work to the middle. Right?
All right, well, thank you.
You are welcome.
All right. We have no curriculum report, no principal or disciplinary reports and no overnight field trip. Uh, but we, we have a maintenance report and there it is, so.
Yeah, we're, you know, the bottom line with the maintenance report is we're busy.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Thompson's staff, busy. Uh, Eric Sickbert, Peter Ponciarelli, busy. Um, there is a lot going on, um, right now and, and not just the central construction project going on, so. Any questions about the maintenance report? Okay.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items number two to number eight?
Someone?
A second.
All right. It's been motioned by Mr. Please and second by Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Keith?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez, Kneebah?
Yes.
All right. Do I, do we make the motion and then Dr. Shaw's going to read it?
Right. We would have someone make that motion and then you would need, uh, someone to, motion, second, and then.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the action on student number 205034219?
I move that based upon and after the board's consideration of the evidence and testimony of the expulsion hearing held July 1st, 2024, the Board of Education finds that student number 205034219 has committed an act of gross misconduct as charged by the district's administration in that student, that this student was charged with assault and battery, which is in violation of the 2324 Student Behavior Code. I move that the Board of Education expel this student for one year, beginning the first day of the 2425 school year through the end of the 2425 school year, but that expulsion be held in abeyance and this student be administratively transferred to an alternative school as determined by the district's administration pursuant to Article 13A of the Illinois School Code. Prior to considering a recommendation for expulsion, the district's administration attempted other behavioral interventions, including but not limited to phone conference with parent, social suspension, police notification, refer to the counselor and social worker, conference with student, external suspension, in-school suspension, and re-engagement meetings. These disciplinary interventions determined there are no other appropriate and available behavioral and disciplinary interventions. Removing this student from the learning environment is in the best interest of the school because the student's continuing presence in school would pose the threat to the safety of other students, staff, staff and members of the school community and/or would substantially disrupt, impede and interfere with the operation of the school. The duration of the student's expulsion is appropriate based on the gravity of the misconduct, the safety concerns and disruption caused by the misconduct and the prior interventions utilized to support the student and promote acceptable behavior and acceptable means of conflict resolution. The expulsion being held in abeyance is contingent upon the student's full participation in the alternative school program, including regularly attending school, complying with attendance policies, school rules and any referrals for services or counseling made by the alternative school and successfully completing the alternative school's curriculum. I further move that this student, if this student fails to fully participate in the alternative school program and the alternative school refers the student back to dis, to the district, this student shall immediately be expelled from Lockport Township High School, District Number 205, for the remainder of the district administration's recommended expulsion duration through the end of the 2425 school year.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw. Do I need, I need a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Lopez, Kneebah?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the copy paper bid? Some of them.
Second.
All right. It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Please. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez, Kneebah?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution approving emergency change order? Some of them.
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Please. All right. Any questions? Roll call.
Keith?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez, Kneebah?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the tentative budget for the fiscal year 2024, 2025? I'll make that motion. Second. It's been motioned by Ms. Lopez Kneebah and second by Dr. Shaw. Guess we had all our answers, all our questions answered by Ms. Please. All right. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez, Kneebah?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to policy updates.
We, we have put it off and we cannot put it off anymore. So, um, one thing I want to draw the, the board's just general attention to, Policy 4:20 is actually not part of this press packet because it only has footnotes and legal references. So it doesn't require board, um, approval. But what, what I would recommend is it's an opportunity to talk about fund balances. My recommendation is that you, you keep your policy unchanged, which aligns with the Illinois State, you know, Board of Education in terms of financial recognition, five months of cash on hand. And that we put sort of our work into, that creates a minimum of cash on hand that you have to observe. And then we work on your goal, your district goal, tightening that up to reflect your desire to use fund balances. I think we can come back next month with some of that goal language. Mrs. Corry and I have talked about rather than that range of six to 12 months of cash on hand, that our goal is eight to nine months of cash on hand and show you what the implications of that would be as well. So I would keep your policy. I would change your goal, which is basically your practice, how you're, you're operating. And any questions about that or anything? Once, once you memorialize it as policy, then it's fixed. So very quickly, I just want to give you a flavor to a, a proper first reading of, um, you know, the slides that, that, that you're going to see. Uh, what, what are we changing? Some of these changes are very minor. There's lots of changes in here that one policy changes language, so lots of other policies. Minor change in 240, um, for board member qualifications who are disbarred if you are, uh, this is an actual legal term. It is not a National Enquirer term. There is a legal term for infamous crime. Right? Uh, there are a list, a set list of crimes that are infamous crimes. And if you are, um, found guilty of. And if you are found guilty of committing an infamous crime, you're disbarred from school board membership. Uniform grievance procedure, this just, this is one of those that has lots of legs other places. This is, whoa, sorry, golly Moses. This is any kind of freedom from complaints regarding discrimination based on perceived race, color, or national origin. So it includes complaints that can be filed for those, those three reasons. This 2:265, this is just a change in name for Title IX Grievance. It's now known as Title IX Grievance Procedure, not Title IX Sexual Harassment Grievance Procedure. Just take sexual harassment out, simplifies it, the policy name is changed, then the board has to approve it. This is an entirely new policy. 2:270, this adds this policy that everywhere that we have nondiscrimination, that individuals cannot be discriminated based on the perceived race, color, or national origin. So it includes that language in, in a variety of different places. Fund balances, we just, we just had that discussion. 4:165 is awareness and prevention of child sexual abuse and grooming. Due to a name change of the policy in the Title IX policy, there's also a change in the, in the policy here to align with that. 4:190, this updates language in terms of school violence prevention, updating it requires staff, students, and parents to disclose any threats or behavior that may represent a threat to the school. This basically means we are mandated reporters of any potential threat. It's legal change, school code change, really coming out of the Oxford, Michigan case where there was knowledge on the part of parents that a child was bringing a gun to school, that child used that weapon, and actually the, the parents were found criminally guilty because of that knowledge. So any of us would become aware, we have to report that threat. Again, this, this policy, equal employment, it's, it's updated in response to a change in 2:270, it adds language from the Pregnant Workers Act and the Fair Labor Standards Act. Workplace harassment, this incorporates that race, perceived race, color, or national origin as a reason you cannot be harassed. Staff development, this was, was added, this relates to all of our trainings we have to take at the beginning of the year, and it streamlines the different types of categories that we can participate in staff development to eight categories, and it all, it requires all of us to be trained as staff in harassment, bullying, sexual harassment, part of Title IX, new, new regulations with Title IX. Again, due to the change in Title IX, Title IX is referenced in this policy, so we have to change this policy as well. Equal education, again, Title IX change, it's referenced here, we have to change the language. Again, you know, this policy was just updated, harassment is prohibited based on physical appearance, socioeconomic status, and academic status. This policy is a prevention of bullying. Students are free, need to be free from bullying, national origin, military status, and unfavorable military discharge, that we cannot discriminate a student who's going into the military, cannot discriminate based on that student's desire to go into the military. Hard to imagine that, but obviously there's state law there because that's probably happened. Teen dating, it updates teen dating to match the new Title IX Grievance Procedures, and then the rest of these policies have just had footnote and legal reference changes. This is a lot of housekeeping in, in this, due to new federal law and new state law. We do the first policy, this comes from press, it's an organization, Illinois State Board of Education, and Illinois Association of School Boards has for us, it takes all the new law, compresses it into policy and recommends changes. Any questions? You do not vote this month, you, you actually vote next month.
Do you know what the definition of an infamous crime is?
It's literally, you can look it up, it's a list of different types of crimes.
I, I tried to look it up, but I, I can't get like a list.
I'm, I'm happy to, you want me to spend the money asking Todd Hayden what, you know, what infamous crimes are? Let's just hope we never need to use that.
That's right.
Please, board members, no infamous crimes, all right? Or anybody running for board election, just stay away from them.
That's right. Announcements?
Announcements, very quickly before we adjourn and get away from the weather, a couple important things. One important, I will be literally out of the district, you know, invited to participate, representing our district in Japan from July 19th to August 3rd. We're going to Yokohama, about 20 students, Carla Button. Interesting enough, the Yamate School, who was here and you met their teachers, they, in this two-week window, all eight of their North American partners are going. So they are hosting a grand sum total of about 150 students.
Wow, wow.
So it will be really interesting, and our students will not only be in Japan, doing homestays in Yokohama, and doing all the things we're doing, but they'll be interacting with students from Canada, from different parts of the United States. We got Saskatchewan, we got Dayton, and I think it's going to be a very, very rich experience and I'm really, you know, I'm honored that, to, to help initiate this on that end and get that going.
Plenty of pictures.
Yeah, we will send you pictures. Lori Christopher will be acting superintendent, and it's important because of the time change to, to really, you know, obviously, phone, email, I'm available. But for example, on your special board meeting on July 29th, she'll be your superintendent. I just put down the timeline for applicants for the board position that we just went over, they're there. Our next monthly board meeting will be Monday, August 19th, that's also the first day of school. You will be swearing in four new student board members, they're very excited. And also on July 26th, I'm really sad I can't attend this, but at Mistwood, and certainly if you reach out to me, if you're interested in going, I know Anne Caniva's going, or to Kathy, our first Lockport Athletic Legends induction is taking place that evening, July 26th, at Mistwood. We have luminaries in Lockport athletic history. Ron Coomer is a Lockport legend, but he is on the road with the Cubs and would like to be inducted when he can actually be there. So we'll probably get him in the next class. Great benefit, if you'd like to go, just let us know and we'll make it happen. Those are the announcements.
Thank you.
He's got to wear his, what is it?
Yeah, he's got to. Those are your announcements.
All right. And then as far as that August 19th, that first day of school, is that where you're going to have, you're having teacher institute that day, right?
That is a good point, Mrs. Lopez Caniva. If everybody could put on your calendar, August 15th, Thursday, August 15th, is our staff breakfast, our keynote speaker, and then our, we, we start our two days of institute day. But one of the best times, if you're a board member and you'd like to come to the breakfast, you'd like to come, you know, hear the keynote speaker, it's, it's a great time to do it. And then also, I always invite you the very first week of school, as you know, I sometimes spend some time on buses. If you ever want to walk and talk, just first day of school, it's a great time for board members just to come on in and see the thing happen and roll out. It's, I, I think it's one of the most fascinating times.
What time is the breakfast at?
The breakfast, likely Lance, would be at eight o'clock. It's going to be, I'm going from memory where we've typically done it.
And is there an opportunity, if you're interested or a board member to go through Central and at least see some of the stuff that has been.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, certainly this week we could do it, if you just, you know, if you and I communicate and say, hey, I got about an hour, that'd be lovely. And then certainly, if I'm gone, Bill Thompson, Lori Christopher, but any of you wanting to walk through Central, you know, it's, it's buttoning up quickly even as we speak, right? It's great to do.
All right, well, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Some more?
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Peace and second by Dr. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, get home before.